...Town Council, Monday, April the 16th, 2018, 9:00 AM in council chambers. We'll call the meeting to order, and is there any introduction of late items? No, so could we please have the agenda adopted as printed? Thank you, Counselor Rhodes, Counselor Youngberg, all in favor. Thank you. And we have a couple of delegations this morning, and the first one is a delegation from Desert Sun Counseling and Resort Center, and we're going to have a presentation by the new CEO, Executive Director, Marisa Tar, who I announced had been here longer than she actually has, and she's only lived in Asousis for 18 years, and been very busy, being the President of Rotary and the Chair of the School Board and various other things in her 18 years. So we're very happy to have you here today to explain a little bit about what Desert Sun and Resource Center does, because I was absolutely amazed the last time that I heard Marisa at Seroptimist at all of the programs that they have. So we're very happy to have you here. Go ahead, please.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for having me today. Yeah, and I would like to start off also by thanking Council and the Town of Asousis for their support of our organization. So Desert Sun Counseling and Resource Center, I think everyone knows that we do counseling, we have the Safe Home, but not a lot of people know about all the many other programs that we offer. And one of my goals for this year, after I took over as ED, was to create more awareness of the many other programs that we offer. And a lot of the other programs are actually preventative of nature, so we deal with, we counsel women and children and men who are in crisis, but it is also important to remember that we, one should do something to break that cycle and to address the problem. So we are located in Oliver, in the neighborhoods of Learning Building, which is attached to the high school, and then we've just moved to our new office, which is just on the road from you, thanks to the Town of Asousis. So we are now in a lot more, in a location where we're a lot more accessible to people. So, yes, so we run most of our programs out of both, we do counseling in the Asousis location, but our Better At Home program is, the main office is located in Asousis, and I sort of tried to be in Asousis one day a week, but I spend most of my time in Oliver. So Desert Sun Counseling was incorporated as a non-for-profit organization in 1998, and all of our services that we provide to people are, there's no feat for any of our services. And then we also, the other thing that you might not know, is that most of our people are self-referred. So doctors do refer some patients to us, but we also take people who refer themselves for service. Our mission statement is for a community where all citizens have the opportunity to be healthy, participating, community members, and our mission is to facilitate the improvement in the quality of life for every individual, family member, and also the community at large. And we've actually just, this last week, come up with a new strategic plan, which will be our roadmap for the next five years, and also with a new vision and a mission, and we are planning to have a reveal in the middle of June, and you will all be invited to that. And our new strategic plan will be very visual, something like that, so that it's easy for everyone to see where we're going and our goals for the next five years. Thank you. So, as I said before, people are very aware of the fact that we provide counseling to women, to children, and also to men. Our counseling programs to women and men and children have to, for women and children to access our services, they have to meet a specific criteria, and that is, we only provide counseling to women and children who have witnessed abuse or who have been part of abuse, or have also experienced violence in the home, or women who have experienced sexual abuse in their past. Men's, men can access our counseling for a variety of reasons, stress, also men who try to deal with relationship issues, and also we help men to build more healthy relationships with children and their partners. And our women and men's counseling, our women and children's counseling, we, as I said, provide free of charge, and the funding we get for that very specific counseling comes from the Ministry of Victim Services. Our men's counseling is also free, but all the dollars that we, that we provide for men's counseling comes through donations and fundraising. So we do not get currently any funding for our men's counseling, which is, in some ways, a pity, because if you address women and children through counseling and you don't do anything about the men, then you're only fixing half of, half of their problem. And then we provide Mother Goose, which we provide through Strong Starts. So we have a parenting facilitator who goes into Strong Starts with, work with families at risk, and then Mother Goose provide families with literacy support and language skills. And then we run our Parent Connection program in conjunction with our Community Kitchen. So our Community Kitchen is run out of the Lutheran Church in Asousis, and it's every Thursday, and we encourage young parents to access our kitchen, and every Thursday they come at about 9:30 in the morning, and we provide all the produce, all the ingredients that's needed to cook a meal. They can pay, if they can afford to pay, they pay $5, and then they cook a meal, which they all have to gather on Thursday, and they also prepare three meals that they then take home with them, that they can put in the freezer for the rest of the, of the week. So as you all might know, food security is an issue in our, in our town. You would not believe that, but we, we have a lot of hungry kids in our schools, which we feed in the week through grants that we access from the ministry. But, you know, young families, they don't stay, our food banks only open once a month. So this helps with food security, and all of our food that, all the cooking that happens, happens from scratch. So we actually teach parents' skills, cooking skills, too. We teach them to can, and while the cooking is taking place in the kitchen, we have free childminding for, for the children. And as women always do when they're in the kitchen, they often talk about their problems that they have with parenting, or also relationship issues. So we have a facilitator right there who can work with them and address the issues that they face. And then I think everyone is very aware that we also run a Safe Home. So we run a Safe Home for women who are fleeing abuse, and then we also have a crisis line, which is available to women 24/7, and women, by dialing that number, can speak to somebody who might help them access service, or service difference services, or help them access the Safe Home. So there's just some slide of, our slides about Community Kitchen. You can see that they, in this slide, they prepare pierogies, and that's all from scratch, salad, and then there's our childminder over there. So they, the facilitator also models positive parenting, so that, that parents can see, you know, what does it look like to be a good parent? Sorry, sorry, I, okay, okay. So then at Christmas time, they normally have a big celebration, where they cook a turkey and mashed potatoes, so you can see, and then there's normally little gifts for, for the, the children, too. So this helps for a lot of isolated, as you know, when you become a parent for the very first time, that is quite isolating for, for women, and they, and a lot of women who access our kitchen, they are here without family support, so they don't have a lot of people around them who can help them. And so this is, this becomes like a little community, where they meet other moms who are going through the same struggles as them, and then they can also access services, you know, through the, our parenting facilitator, and also access, they can, she also puts them in contact with some of the other services that they might need, like social assistance or any of that. Thanks. So then another big program that we run in, that I think most of you are aware about, are aware of, is the Better At Home program. So that is a program where we support seniors to stay in their homes for as long as possible. So we provide them with light housework, so we have a woman who go in and clean houses, so that. We have snow removal services, we have yard work, yard maintenance workers, and then we also have a handyman who will fix small things around the house that needs, that needs fixing. And then, of course, we have our van, which will provide seniors with transport to and from doctor's appointment, groceries. And so we also have volunteers who actually work with seniors who are shut in, especially in the winter. Some seniors become very lonely and isolated, so we have some people who will actually go and work with them. So the Better At Home program is, works on a sliding scale, so seniors below a certain income can access all of our services for free, and then above that cut of income, they will pay a small percentage of the services that they, they use, and then as they earn more and more money, they will pay more for the services. United Way is our major, major funding, funder for this program. Unfortunately, as you know, with grant funders, we never, you know, we still have to fundraise for, to support this program. It's not fully funded. Even with the support of people who can afford services, there's, we are always in a little bit of a deficit for our Better At Home program, so we always have to fundraise for some extra resources to, to pay for all of our services. So you might wonder how many people access our services, and where does all the donations that we receive go? So we also do community outreach, and that is, a lot of people will phone our organization and try to access services, so we will be able to tell them where to go. So, you know, people might need their taxes done, so seniors, we provide some tax returns for seniors, for free, or if we can't do it, we will, we will refer them to an agency that we know can do it. Also, a lot of referrals come to our office, and we cannot provide them with the services they need, but we normally know where to send them. So on a yearly basis, we provide community outreach to one, about 1,200 people who phone our office, and if you were to be in our office on a Monday, our phone rings without stop, and we spend a lot of time in the week, just, you know, connecting people with the right services. So last year, we had 16 men access our counseling services for a total of 52 hours. This year, I know our numbers are up considerably. At the moment, we have 12 men on our waiting list, and we have just, in the last week, made two extra hours of counseling available per week, just to address our waitlist. And then we provided counseling to 97 women, for a total of 390 hours last year, and 53 youth, for a total of 486 hours. So also 150 seniors used our services last year, for a total of 1,983 hours. And we have 33 volunteers who help with our Better At Home program, and, you know, they might do things such as driving the van, or even just going out to be with some of our seniors. And then our early childhood and parenting support program, we are working, last year, we worked with 74 parents and 70 children, and we had 10 seniors also work in the Community Kitchen and access services in the Community Kitchen. And I think that is such an important connection, too, and I, something that I'm going to promote more of, is for seniors to also go to our Community Kitchen, because I think that's an important link sometime for, you know, young people who don't really have any family, and then if we have seniors, seniors going to the kitchen, too, you know, they can become like each other's adopted families, which I think socially is good for both parties. And we provided 1,000, we answered 1,424 calls last year of women in crisis, and we had 102 bed stays, stays in our Safe Home last year. So, as I said before, we receive funding from different sources, so most of our counseling is done through funding from the Ministry of Justice. Better At Home is funded through United Way, and then we also get quite a bit of money from the Gaming Fund, as well as B.C. Housing, and B.C. Housing provides the funding for the Safe Home and also for some of the crisis support, and so does United Way. And I believe that is my last, oh, yes, and then, as you all know, Empty Bowls is one of our major fundraisers. So this year, because we are looking at some more programs, we are going to be trying to have another fundraiser in July. We have just connected with a band, who is going to be willing to donate their, their services to us, and we are hoping to have a concert in the park, where we're going to sell hamburgers and hot dogs and, and beer and cider, and we are hoping that we will be able to access some funds at that fundraiser, too. And that is the end of my slideshow, so some more, some other projects that we have on the way for moving forward. Our agency is also going to be partnering with the school district to provide the Roots of Empathy program. So Roots of Empathy, at the moment, was run, I ran it myself, just as sort of an independent person, but I will be, we will now be running that through Desert Sun Counseling. As I said, we, we've just worked on a new strategic plan. So, and then we are also, we have partnered with B.C. Housing to, to acquire an affordable housing project in, in Oliver, which we will be running from the beginning of May. And it's just a small project, but we're hoping to build on that moving forward. So, and that's my presentation.
Thank you very much, Marisa. It's, it's quite fascinating to hear about all the programs, some of which I didn't know, and, and that's awful that I didn't know that. I knew about some, some of them very well, but I do thank you very much, and I certainly think your graphic of the house with donations at work is, is really eye-catching, and is a great way for us to see immediately what, what you do.
Yes.
So I'm going to see if Council has any questions. Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor McCorduff. Well, thanks for coming and speaking to us today. I'm sure you're busy.
Yes.
And I think the organization has a very important function in the community. With this meeting being filmed on Granicus, I just wanted to give you the opportunity to plug the best way for people to donate, if they want to make a donation to the organization.
They can donate online. We actually, on our website, there is a, there is a button that you can click, just click Donate Now. And, yes, so any donations, of course, is welcome, and you can even, you know, specify which program you would like to support. So, yes.
So donating of money and donating of time, I would assume. You want donations of manpower.
Yes, yes. So we're always looking for volunteers, like, I know we are short on, on van, van drivers, and I made a bit of a plug for that at the Rotary, and we got a few extra volunteer drivers, but we are still looking for more, so if you know of anyone who is willing to donate some, some time to driving the van, that would be great, too. Yes.
Good, thank you. Anyone else? Well, thank you very much. We really appreciate it. Please come back anytime if you have upgrades, and we look forward to hearing about your new mission statement and, and that in June.
And as I said, we will be inviting all of you to our reveal of that, so thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Next, we have the, oh, maybe we could move that out of the way, can we? Yeah. Thanks, Ms. Van Veenen. Next, we have the Employee, Asousis Employee Housing Society, and they would like to speak to us about a staff housing project. And Ingrid, are you going to speak? I see that you have several members of your group here with you. Please go ahead. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. I'm, we have a three-part presentation. I'm part number one, and then Daniel Bibby will be partner number two, or presenting number two, and then Glenn Harris will finalize the presentation. We're here representing the Asousis Employee Housing Society, which is a registered not-for-profit society, and we've done this work together with our community and our stakeholders that are connected to the tourism industry. Our tourism industry has grown in the last 10 years substantially, as we all know and live in the community. You know, in about 2005, we actually were looking at a growth strategy, and what we're seeing today is the result of each year, all of us working together to develop our community in a sustainable and responsible fashion. Increasingly, as we see new businesses in Asousis and the South Okanagan, so I'll just name some of those businesses in the last 10 years. Wineries, restaurants, retail shops, cafes, attractions, sports businesses, gyms, yoga studios, spas, hotels, and resorts. All these local businesses contribute to our town, to our taxes, and growing our community. When I speak to these industry, or each of these independent businesses, and being a business manager myself, increasingly, every year, we have a critical shortage of how we house our seasonal employees. The, the new businesses create a new workforce that all contribute to our community, and when we have a restriction on where they can live, it actually means that it's restricting our business success, and it also means that we have, or we have the result, which is, we're concerned about the guest service experience, we're concerned about the brand of our community, and we're concerned about how we grow our businesses moving forward. There are many examples over the last, especially three to four years, where employee shortages have actually restricted business growth, and that would be in a cafe not being open in the evening, in a restaurant just not being open at certain times, maybe not during the week, or maybe closing for a lunch period. And we have also layered on top of this, a new, a new kid on the block, which is Airbnb and VRBO. Currently, when you search for, in August, for Airbnb, there are 68 rental units that currently are being nightly rentals, instead of what would have been monthly rentals. On VRBO, there's 54 in the month of July. When we look at the Town of Asousis and how big it is, and thinking that that housing, we historically would have been able to secure on a monthly rental, and would have rented it from potentially April till October, and housed our, our employees, we currently, that sort of amplifies what the situation is layered with business growth. Our community really gathered together over the last few years, and there's been many times when we've got together and said, what can we do about this as a community? And I think the result is, this year, we have support from Destination Asousis and their board, our Economic Development Community, the Hotel Motel Association, as well as the Asousis Indian Band. We've gotten together, and we've worked hard over the last few months to say, what can we do for this year? Because all the numbers indicate, this year will be stronger than last year, but if we're restricted on actually being able to secure the housing, then that actually result, is in jeopardy. We do have a couple of examples of other resort municipalities that have been able to work on employee housing outcomes, and we've modeled what we're about to present to you on some of those other success stories. And Daniel?
Welcome, Daniel.
Thank you, good morning. For those of you who I haven't met, I'm Daniel Bibby. I'm the new, not so new anymore, I guess, a year later. I'm the Executive Director at Spirit Ridge, and also actively on this board of the Asousis Employee Housing Society. The location that we're referring to for this particular camp is, is the former Calcat property. It's the northwest corner of Lot A. A group of tourism partners have been working on this staff housing solution for, for quite some time with a company called Housing On Demand. And Housing On Demand is a Vancouver-based company. They actually provided solutions for the 2010 Winter Olympics. They created the media and security camps around that event. So they produce new, new camps. They also keep an eye out for used camps that become available. And in this particular case, a used Suncor camp has become available, an oil exploration camp. So it would provide us 49 rooms in the community to help address staff housing. Our plan was to establish a not-for-profit society, and that's where the Asousis Employee Housing Society came from, and that would allow tourism partners to invest in this development and help subsidize housing within our community. At this point, the structure has been set up as based on investment, is that a third of the commitment has been put forward by Spirit Ridge, a third has been put forward by Watermark, and then the other third is a collection of other smaller properties around the community. There's significant costs associated with this camp. Transporting it down is a big cost. There's 13 tractor trailers that would basically get the camp down here on site. There's setup, there's landscaping required, and there's utilities, and the connection with utilities is, is quite a large cost. The first camp that we were looking at was a little bit smaller than this one, and we thought we had a deal on it, and unfortunately, just with the timing of financing and so on, that deal fell apart, and it was actually sold from within, from underneath of us, and, but we now have a better solution, which is the 49-room camp. I think overall, what's, what's really important to, to note here is that this isn't going to be the full solution for housing in our community. There's multiple communities across this province who are going through the same issue. This is just a step forward. I think it's a great community initiative, because private industry is working together to help invest money, to help provide a solution. We're not here looking for a handout. We're actually just looking for the opportunity to work together as partners to help provide a solution. I think that we could be leaders in this province, and, and start with this as step one, and who knows, down the road, there could be additional opportunities to expand or continue to, to add more staff housing. Thanks very much. I'm going to pass it over to Glenn.
Welcome, Glenn.
Thank you very much. Good morning, everybody. I'm Glenn Harris, Managing Partner for the Watermark Beach Resort. We also operate the Watermark Beach Resort under Watermark Hospitality Management, and that's where Ingrid and Paul come in, and that's where we're personally in need of accommodation for staff housing. Ingrid touched on it. The growth in the industry, in terms of demand- touched on it. Um, the growth in the industry, uh, in terms of demand for staff housing has really increased year over year. And unfortunately, the supply for staff housing has diminished year over year with particularly, um, VRBO and Airbnb. So that's why we're here. We, we've been working together to try and find a solution to our staff housing crisis, really. And we apologize for coming kind of late in the game for, for this season, but this opportunity, um, was, um, brought forward by Daniel some months ago when we were looking at this first camp. And then, uh, as, as he mentioned, it, it went away because we couldn't make a quick decision. And now there's another one. So we're coming again, late in the day, but we, we want to seek your guidance and seek your help. I'd like to just turn back to the property, if I can, for one second, just to give everyone kind of context for the property we're looking at. So, um, we are...
Don't touch it.
Right here. This is the Calcat property. There's, there's Highway 3 going by there. This is an old map, so it shows 45th going here off the highway. But actually, there's a road that now kind of cuts across there for, um, a better sense of arrival to the incoming resort. Um, and I originally was coming here with the group for an ask to, uh, get some assistance on, on connection fees for water and sewer. We actually have two asks to review today. Barry, uh, quite rightly pointed out something that I wasn't aware of until just recently. Uh, back in 2010, um, the Asouyous Indian Band and the town entered into a no-build covenant over that property to ensure that when it was developed, um, the 45th Street access would be completed. I think there's some, some turn-ons or, um, you know, some access from 45th onto the highway where they need another, uh, some, some more road to make it more safe for access to the highway. And also, there's an extension of Cedar Lane that goes through both the Calcat and the Ferrera property back to 45th. And as you just pointed out, for those that don't know, both of those properties, as well as those two others, the Gill and the Messler property, that are highlighted in yellow, are referred to as ATR lands. Those are added to reserve land. So the Asouyous Indian Band bought those properties some years ago and then have added them to the reserve. So that's why they're now OIB lands. OIB intends to develop those lands and would like to see retail and housing go on there. But at the moment, um, they are going through their own designation process, which is like an official community plan process, and don't have, um, immediate plans to develop those properties. So, uh, given that they were available and, and somewhat idle, and there's this need for, for staff housing, um, Daniel, uh, with our support, uh, went to OIB to request a short-term lease on those properties, referred to as a buckshi lease. And OIB has granted a temporary buckshi lease for those lands, um, for these, these trailers to be placed. So, uh, again, I thought we had one ask, but we've got two. So this, uh, no-build covenant has a restriction, and I'll read it. Um, it says, "The owner shall not construct, install, or place, or permit any building, structure, or improvement on Lot B, uh, Lot A and Lot B, which are the Calcat and Ferrera properties, except for those purposes necessary for, for growing, for orchard folks." So what we're talking about is placing a structure. So question number one, or ask number one, would be for Mayor and Council to direct staff to consider an exception or exclusion, short-term exclusion, to the no-build covenant. That'd be number one ask. Your, your current rates for water and sewer hookups are based on single-family household equivalents. There are formulas that can be used to calculate a 49, 49-room, um, you know, camp, work camp into single-family equivalents. Once that's done, those would then be applied to your rates, which are $8,000 per sewer connection and $2,555 per water connection. So that's 10-5 per, per household equivalent. And given that we're a not-for-profit society and this is a temporary use, not a permanent use, and I think that's one of the other challenges we've got here with this, this question, is, um, you don't really have a formula for a temporary use for a three-year, two-year, whatever, whatever the short-term use is until we can find more permanent solutions. But that would be our other ask. Can we work with the town to find a, a formula for a discount on water and sewer equivalents? So those are the two asks. One is the, um, exception or exclusion on the no-build covenant, and two, some help with the water and sewer connections.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask the, um, exception to the no-build, uh, covenant is not just the town. It would also be the, the...
Asouyous Indian Band.
The Asouyous Indian Band. Has, have they entered into this conversation yet about that issue? Could I ask Mr. Remanko or?
No, they, we haven't. Uh, this was just brought up last week.
Okay.
And this is part of the, the process, is that, uh, based on the direction of council, whether or not they would even want to consider this, this particular type of, uh, of a partnership. Uh, we would then, uh, importantly, have to go to the, uh, the two bodies that were involved in that agreement and, uh, determine how we can maintain the integrity of the agreement. Because, uh, the integrity of the agreement in, certainly from the administration's perspective, is very important to, uh, maintain, uh, the connectivity, road development, uh, responsibilities on future developers.
Good. Thank you. And you also, one other thing, and then I'll open it up because I'm sure council will have. Um, you say it's a temporary lease on this land.
Yep.
Is that for a certain number of years? Or is that open to sort of?
No, it's, it's got, it's got a minimum three-year, maximum five-year.
Okay.
And it's referred to as a buckshi lease.
Yes.
And I can assure you that the Asouyous Indian Band is very interested in developing those properties. And this is really a temporary accommodation.
Sure.
To help with a, with a brilliant crisis situation. But to your question and to Barry's response, I would take responsibility to, uh, to meet with, uh, Chief and Council and, and go through a similar presentation and make that ask. Uh, I'm, I'm virtually certain, but I would have to certainly respectfully ask the question, that given that they're prepared to, to provide a buckshi lease for that property, they would also give relief on, on, on this no-build covenant.
Thank you.
I'm pretty sure that they just weren't aware of it until Barry wrote it up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I certainly appreciate the fact that you've all worked hard to, um, to look at a, uh, a, a possible solution for, um, this issue, which is certainly, um, evident in every community and certainly the resort communities, because we meet with them and we know. Um, thank you for all the work that you've done so far. So Counselor Rhodes was first, I think, and then Campbell.
We're all available for questions.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, thanks for joining the other two presenters. Um, I think I have two questions. The first one is, um, once this is established, who will be the beneficiaries of it and who will decide who and what type of guests are going to actually occupy this? Uh, that's my first question. The other one is, your term, uh, formula for discount, I think, requires some more discussion and information. I think the ask originally was for 100%, which does not require a formula of any kind. So I'm, I'm assuming because of that term, that you would be open to a ratio or a subsidy or some, some kind of those costs.
Yep.
Can you give me some idea or us some idea what that formula may look like?
Sure. I'll answer question number one first. So as, as Daniel mentioned, um, the way we, we carve this off in strategy is, is it'd be a third, third, third. There are some capital costs that are involved in bringing the, the trailer there. And, and we're taking the lead on this, but we definitely have, have, have engaged, uh, BCE Hotel Association, as well as Destination Asouyous, uh, as well as some of our other stakeholders, which could include, you know, Joanne from, from Jojo's. All of us are having challenges finding accommodation for, for, um, needed staff. And just as a, as a ratio, we have 50 full-time employees at, at Watermark. Um, and that's year-round, 50-plus. Uh, but in the summertime, it goes to 150. So there's 100 people. We've got not necessarily all to accommodate. There's some that are nieces and nephews of, of residents of the community. They would stay with their grandparents or their parents. They would work in, for Spirit Ridge or for Jojo's or for Watermark or for any of us. But there's definitely a percentage of them that we can't even attract to this community unless we can find housing. And it used to be, we would rent 10 basement suites and apartments. We would have an inventory that we would get our HR people to say that, you know, we've got accommodation for you. That, as I say, has diminished because of VRBO, Airbnb. So instead of having 10 two-bedroom suites, we're now down to about four or five. So from our personal experience, we already know that, that it's a, it's a challenge, bigger than a challenge. It's kind of mini crisis. Um, so third, 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 uh, is, is how it was envisioned. Um, we have to put together the dollars, and I think it'll be Spirit Ridge and Watermark that'll, that'll take the lion's share of the financial commitment, and then bring our other partners in basically on a, on a per-room basis. Um, certainly, uh, as we add up all of the capital costs required, utility connections are one of those. We have a budget of between 40 and 45,000 for water and sewer, to make this camp viable. That will help us get to that max $150,000 budget, which at the moment, um, and that's, as I say, that's water, sewer, transport, setup, landscape, putting in the gravel road that would access it from 45th Avenue. All of the things required to set up that camp, we have capped at a, a budget of, of 150. If it goes much beyond that, it, it becomes just too much for, for, um, Spirit Ridge and for Watermark to, to take on. Um, we just don't have the time now to get financial commitments from all of the other stakeholders. We know they want the rooms. We know we, if we provide the rooms, they will, they will rent them. Um, and, and so we're really just taking the lead to try and make, make it happen. But it's intend, it's intended to be for all kind of hospitality-related, whether it's retail, uh, resort, winery types of uses.
Good. So people will apply if they want to rent one of the rooms?
Correct.
Yeah.
We'll work with, with, with DO and the other stakeholders. And, and setting up as a not-for-profit society, we, we expect we will go to other, um, you know, funding sources, government funding sources, and, and make applications.
Sure.
And those will be in subsequent years until we can find a permanent solution for this, this. And by buying a camp, that location doesn't have to be the permanent location. Um, as Ingrid mentioned, there's others. And Sun Peaks is one of the ones that has, has gone this camp route. And they've added to their camp year over year. Um, but they're, uh, they found a more permanent location for their property, which we don't have yet. We have a temporary one. And we would hope to work with town and other stakeholders to find a more permanent solution.
Sure. Counselor Campbell.
Thank you. Uh, if you could bear with me, I've just got a few questions. Uh, first one's for Glenn and then Daniel. Um, so the letters of support I saw from the, the Hotel Motel Association and from Destination Asouyous, sort of just to tag on to, to Counselor Rhodes' question there. Um, when this idea was thought up, I know the initiative was taken by, by two, uh, specific resorts. Was the door open to other accommodators? And, and what did that look like to get involved?
So I sit both on the board of, um, the Asouyous Hotel Motel Association, as well as Destination Asouyous. All the, uh, participants on the board of the Asouyous Motel Hotel Association are fully in support. We had a vote. And Peter, on behalf of them, wrote the letter to council in support of this. It, what's really important here is, is that whether you're a small, independent business that has three employees, or you happen to be a Spirit Ridge that probably has 250, that, if this solution is just step one. We all know it's just the beginning, but we felt that if we could include and provide something that would support all of our businesses that are connected with our community and with tourism, that it would have a much greater opportunity to succeed and be community-supported. So both at the Hotel Motel Association and, uh, Destination Asouyous, we had unanimous support for this from all sectors represented at those two boards.
Thank you. And then Daniel. Uh, you can see Spirit Ridge went with a much more polished approach, eh?
Yeah.
Sorry, I had to. Um, two questions. One is, uh, is timing. So, um, obviously, um, with one, you've got a, a specific camp now and that's been purchased already?
We have a deposit down on this particular camp. And, uh, one of our concerns, obviously, is the ability to move quickly. Uh, the, these camps, uh, basically go up on an auction block, uh, in the oil industry right now, downsizing. And they become available, but they have to be moved off of a property fairly quickly. So we, we have a deposit that's secured it right now. We just, we're looking for sort of an early indication, if possible, for support so that we can make the full commitment.
So when would the, the services have to be put in for this to line up?
Well, whether, uh, we're being optimistic or not, we, we were hoping to have the camp here by May 1st. So there, there actually is a pretty big demand right now. There's already a, a lineup of potential employees looking for, uh, accommodations. We do, do realize that that's probably a bit of, of an aggressive timeline. Um, so I think our revised date was, you know, if we could have it functional by May 15th, that, that would be ideal. That is a short period of time.
Okay. And my last question is, um, one of the concerns or perceived concerns that I, I hear out there, whether we're talking about, uh, housing for agriculture or hospitality, is, um, uh, having that many seasonal workers in, in one particular area. How would that be managed? Or how would enforcement work on, on standards of behavior and oversight?
Yeah. So we have a, a staff residence, uh, adjacent to Spirit Ridge that we last year took full control of. So this, the team at Spirit Ridge, we have a human resources director that has put together a very comprehensive package. And we have a management team that actually manages, inspects it on a weekly basis, makes sure it's clean. And, and, uh, the Asouyous Indian Band was very happy with how that was managed last year. This, that's why this, this opportunity came up. So our, our intent was to take the lead on this and have an onsite resident manager that would live at the property. We've, uh, we've already got a candidate. He's in his, I should, probably late 50s. Uh, but he's, he's worked up in Fort McMurray before. He understands the camp environment and he understands sort of the rules and structure that you need to keep in place. So our, our goal is to make sure that this is a responsible housing development and that it's well-controlled and maintained. And it provides a place that people can be rested and ready for work the next day.
Thank you.
Counselor Youngberg.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you to all of you. Um, absolutely needed. And, uh, everybody knows I'm in the rental business and have calls all the time for, uh, rental properties for seasonal workers. Uh, one question is, will you need both of those properties? No. So would it be feasible to consider that, you know, one or the other could be used? Because from a development perspective, it, one may be much easier than the other to handle from Public Works' point of view.
So, so the actual property that we're referring to is the Calcat property?
Right.
And it's, it's basically that very narrow strip of land that, it's not the entire property?
Okay.
It's, it's about a half an acre parcel on that property.
Okay. Yeah, it makes a difference because the, uh, glenley servicing, I think, comes to the end of Cedar Lane there, doesn't it?
Correct.
Right.
If this was a, a modern, uh, or this was an up-to-date map, you'd show a little indent off 45th, which is where Cedar Lane will connect.
Okay.
So there's, there's some concrete barriers there, right there. But it actually has, if you drive 45th, you'll see where Cedar Lane's intended to, to link up.
Yeah, I know, exactly.
So it would be our, uh, proposal to bring in a gravel road from that, that area, that, that already, that, that little intersection, bring it down to here, and basically put the camp in amongst the orchard. So it's, it's as inconspicuous as possible.
Right.
Certainly, the management question is a very valid question and one that, that we had to present to OIB before they would, they would grant the buckshi lease. They want to make sure that it doesn't turn into, you know, too crazy a place. So, uh, a resident manager is part of the program and, and putting the camp. And this one that, uh, this number two camp, and actually, it's the third, take that back, it's the fourth camp. Last year, we looked at two of them, missed them both, thought we, it was too late in the game. We better reorganize earlier this year. And then we had one in, in mind, lost that one. And this is the fourth one that's come our way. And while I like this one best, they're, they're all single rooms. There's 49 single rooms, whereas the other ones were shared rooms. Um, and I think it's just better for, for, for folks to have their own room. There's common areas that are shared. There's no commercial kitchen on this one either. So, uh, these folks are, are, it's really just a, a place for them to, uh, to sleep.
And showering. Will you have a kitchen, a separate component that will provide kitchen facilities?
Basically a commissary kitchen, like microwaves, that sort of stuff?
Yeah.
Probably a barbecue outside. But it's not intended to have, uh, well, it doesn't have a commercial kitchen.
Nice-looking plan, I think. Can you stockpile? That's a very loose term, but can you just bring the components down if the servicing wasn't available by the 15th of May? Because I can see the timeframe, you know, from
Being tight, yeah.
Just a common sense point of view. It's very difficult to get our crews out there and do some engineering and do all that sort of stuff, right? If that was ever going to be considered. But, uh, so my question was, is just, do you have a place where you can put these units and keep them there until such time as, as the plan is finished? Like, are you, have you, can you do that on that land?
We, we could.
Yeah.
So, literally, we do have access to that land right away. So
Right.
And, and we are getting a bit of pressure from Housing On Demand to move the camp down here.
That's what I'm thinking.
It's just, uh, you know, we also have a, this is a not-for-profit society. We have a, a tight budget that we're working with to... We have a, a tight budget that we're working with to make it viable.
Yes.
And, and we, and we do know that, you know, the cost of the housing has to be very reasonable for, for employees who are here seasonally. So we're just trying to make sure that all the numbers make sense.
Absolutely. Thank you. It's important to see you'd only use a certain portion of that Calcat property.
Yeah, it's only, it's only a half-an acre buck sheet.
Yeah.
And that, I think that's probably about ten acres, so it's really.
Yes, that's right.
Good. Mr. Remanko, did you have a comment?
Thank you.
Yes, just for, just for clarity, is that your town would not be installing the services? We would, our, our, you know, our service line would run to the border of the property, and then you would be picking up the servicing costs and the servicing, actually, whatever is done from there, right? That's, that's your expectation? Yes.
Okay.
It's relief on the connection fee costs that we're looking for, the actual physical connection of the, of the pipes to the camp. We, we understand that would be our responsibility.
Good.
Or the, the society's responsibility.
Sure. So, Mr. Remanko, can you tell us what would make the most sense here? Would, could we recommend that staff have a look at the issues that have been presented and bring back a report to council on what we could and could not do, and how we could help and make this work? Or what would you suggest?
Well, certainly the direction from council relative to whether or not you want administration to address this, this request. Certainly, one of the things that has me some, has caused me some concern is timing. Council does not meet again until May seventh. I don't think that fits within your schedule for a decision, one way or another.
Well, certainly, our wish would be that you could make a, a decision quicker, but on the other hand, we also realize we're coming at council date where you don't have another one until May the seventh. So we realize that. I think what we're looking for is really an endorsement that you will take a, a serious look at it, and that there will be some, particularly on, on question number one, which is, is, is the relief on the, the no-bill clause, and then, and then some, some help. And you asked me before about the formula for, for, for these connection fees. Zero is, is an easy one to calculate. If you're prepared to give them for, for, for no cost, that would certainly be welcomed by the society. But I can appreciate there has to be some, potentially some cost, and we do have some budget for, for, for cost. And, and as I say, if we could figure out some formula, then, then we, we take that on. But I think, I think where, where Daniel is going in, in, in terms of, of the commitment that's required for this camp, if we had a kind of a, an understanding or an expression of, of interest for council to support this initiative, both on question one and question two, we may take some risk, leap of faith, and, and, and secure the, the camp. Because if we don't within the next week or so, we'll lose it. We won't even have the opportunity to have this, this, this conversation. And I think, given the, the pricing of this particular camp, and the quality of this particular camp, and the style, the design of this camp with the forty-nine single rooms, it's one that I think will, will be a real help on this, supporting the staff housing crisis.
Thank you. I'm just going to let Mr. Remanko and then Mr. Director Campbell. Director?
Director.
I've moved you up in the world. Go ahead.
Get a better salary.
Yeah, you do.
So I've just jotted down a few things that, that I feel council will need to consider in, in this overall matter, that, that we will have to kind of research prior to, you know, you know, council making a decision. The first one, and, and is that a request for some type of subsidized service needs to be reviewed within the context of council's ability to support business. And, and I'm looking, and I, I know that the, what's, the group that's coming forward is coming forward as a nonprofit society. However, the benefactors of, of the membership is actually business communities, is the business community. So I would be seeking out a legal opinion relative to council's ability to, to provide subsidy in some way, shape, or form to a nonprofit society that is, that is, basically, the benefactors are, is the business community. The second one would be, and I understand the desire for the group to link with the Assouyous Indian Band and make the request relative to the no-bill covenant to be dealt with. However, we still have to sit down with the Assouyous Indian Band and, and develop some type of legal framework, you know, some type of, if, if we're going to get, go ahead, and I, you know, my sense is that we would have a, not, kind of a nonwithstanding contract, notwithstanding the fact we have this agreement, we would have to create this agreement. I, I don't, and right now, our servicing agreements with the O I B, we are providing services outside our boundary. I need to legally explore if we need another agreement to service this particular development with, that is on Assouyous Indian Band lands.
So it sounds a little complicated. Can I, or can I?
The other thing is, within the context of the agreement, the, the, the lease is for an extended five-year period. We know that sometimes that five-year periods grow into extended agreements. You know, if there's a sense of, and I, I appreciate the fact that the O I B wants to develop these lands into a more permanent type of structure. Again, we have to ensure that if we are getting into an agreement, we've got some type of clause that looks to the, to the, the future. If this camp is here for three to five years, five to ten years, what are the impacts on, on, you know, how, how we're going to explore those, those relationships? So that, kind of, you know, just on, on the top of my head, is, are things that we, we need to explore.
Could those be explored with answers for the next meeting? Or do you think three weeks is?
My sense is that we can. Again, the, we would explore them, we'd, if there are legal agreements that need to be developed.
Sure.
There'd be costs associated with those agreements. I, my sense is that council will have to address whether they want to pick up the costs relative to those agreements, or that would be part of the, the, the overall, you know.
Sure.
Fee arrangements. So, you know, the timing on, on developing those agreements, I can't speak to. Those are outside our hands. But certainly recognizing the importance of this particular project to the community and to the businesses, if council is able to enter into this type of arrangements within the parameters of the group as it would find successful, you know, we would try and deal with this expediently. If we are able to come to some resolution at an earlier date, perhaps we could be able to pull council together in a special meeting so that, you know, a, a decision can be made within, within that, within the, the May seventh period of time.
Thank you. Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, Madam McCorduff. I guess to your point, I, I don't know if a motion's needed or direction, but I, I'd like to see that meeting with the O I B and that legal opinion happen as quickly as possible. And when, when initiative's taken to solve issues, I want to make sure we're doing our part to expedite the process and get the answers we need. And I would also argue that it's, it's, and I understand the need for a legal opinion, but I think as a resort municipality, that, that we're a benefit to the service being delivered in the community as well. So do we need a motion or direction as?
Well, a resolution of direction to the administration to, to, to take some action.
With the issues that, that Mr. Remanko brought up?
Yeah, with the legal opinion and the meeting with.
Well, basically, to, to action the staff, to enable the overall review of the proposal from the, and I'm sorry, I don't know the name off the top of my head, the Assouyous Employee Housing Society ask for servicing of the property on O I B lands.
Good.
Yeah, thank you.
You're moving that and seconding that? Yeah, all in favor?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. We will look into this for you. So thank you very much for coming, and it's certainly an interesting topic for sure, and obviously one that's, that's more needed now than, than it has because of the, of the V R B O and the Airbnb. I just want you to know, though, when we are, when I'm at various places in the province at meetings and so on, when I say I'm from Assouyous, people say, "Love it there. Go there and visit with my friends and stay at the resorts." So whatever you're doing already is obviously working because everybody knows about Assouyous and appreciates all the amenities that are here already. So thank you.
Oh, sure.
Sorry, Jim.
Sorry, Madam here. Here's a question. Because of the timeframe, and you're trying to push it forward, and we just got to go through legal legalities, if it happened to get pushed to the first of June, would you still want to order it?
I think the risk is that we've already lost three. So I think for us, we need to have a sense of confidence that, and, and I'm, I'm seeing from your questions and from your vote that you understand how important that this is. I think it's going to be us deciding on the amount of risk to move forward, because they won't hold it even though we have a deposit. As Daniel cited, there's a lineup. And I would just say one other thing, you know, our, our association, so Destination Assouyous may because it represents business. That's what the entity represents and has a working agreement and funding from the town. Maybe that could be an example that would be able to be cited from a legal perspective of how you work with a, a not-for-profit. You know, it's just sort of the first thing that came to my head, and that might not work, Barry, because you're much more wise than I am.
I think Barry will be able to deal with it for sure, and I'm sure he'll be on it.
I guess what we need to Glenn's point and to Daniel's point is a confidence that potentially we have a partner in the town, that you support it and you understand it. And we're going to have to go back now, and it's a lot of money for us to guarantee and move forward.
I guess I should add these questions. Larry, how long before you lose the opportunity? What's the timeline on losing the opportunity?
I'm almost embarrassed to tell you that it would probably be by the end of this week, as far as making the commitment. Now, we came here today not expecting a decision from council that quickly. We, we really just felt, let's try to understand the level of interest and support, and, and we will have to take some risks. There's no question about it if we want this particular camp.
Looks like you might.
Yeah. And, and I guess maybe one point that I would, just to address Mr. Remanko's comments, would be, you know, if the town were to consider getting the, allowing us to connect the services at the, the town boundary, which I believe is, is the boundary of the Calcat property, we could certainly work closely with the O I B to connect to those services. So if there's a, a concern about, I, I, I don't know the logistics behind all of that, but I, I know that the O I B is very supportive of this project and would assist us in any way to help connect to the town services.
Okay. Well, we will certainly look into it, and we've got a lot of questions that have been asked, and definitely we'll get on it right away. So thank you very much to all of you.
Thank you so much.
Next is the, we've got that, we've got that, we've got that.
Energy.
I'm going down the, the list here. The Energy, B C Energy Step Code. That would be Mr. Paget.
That's me. Morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
There we go. I'm now on a completely different topic. My report this morning is about the B C Energy Step Code and the changes to the B C Building Code. The province has committed to taking incremental steps to increase energy efficiency requirements in the B C Building Code to make buildings net-zero energy-ready by 2032. The B C Energy Step Code is now a part of the B C Building Code, supports that effort. Net-zero means buildings that produce as much energy as they consume. They're up to eighty percent more efficient than a typical new building and use onsite or near-onsite renewable energy systems to produce the remaining energy they need. A net-zero energy-ready building is one that has been designed and built to a level of performance such that it could, with the addition of solar panels or other renewable energy technology, achieve net-zero performance. The B C Energy Step Code provides an incremental and consistent approach to achieving more energy-efficient buildings that go beyond the base prescriptive requirements of the current B C Building Code. It will establish a series of measurable, performance-based, energy-efficiency requirements for construction that communities may choose to adopt when ready. As of December fifteenth, 2017, local government, governments may reference the B C Step Code in their policies and bylaws and may begin enforcing the requirements. The steps number one through five, and step one is voluntary until 2020. According to the Province's Building Standards Branch, the overall operating costs for buildings constructed this way will decrease by more than the actual construction costs will increase. To meet step one, two, and three, we can expect an increase of at least one to three percent in construction costs. The energy use goal for 2032 is fifteen kilowatts per hour per square meter of floor area, and currently, new homes would use on average twenty-two-point-five kilowatts per hour per square meter. Step one entails modeling energy performance and measuring air tightness to ensure that a building will meet or exceed the minimum energy efficiency requirements in the current base Building Code. New buildings will be energy modeled using the National Energy Code, Passive House Best Practices Standards, which is formerly the, the old Canadian R-two-thousand standard, or the Ashray ninety-point-one standard, alone or in combination. Certified energy designers will be required to perform the analysis and recommend best practices and procedures for onsite construction. There are currently about seventy certified energy designers in B C, and more are coming out and being certified all the time. Air tightness and thermal bridging, heat recovery and heat loss, heat gain improvements, shape and shading and style of the building envelope are key factors in decreasing energy use. Physical onsite air testing during and after construction are critical to determine that the energy use goals set by the designer have been met or exceeded. To provide sufficient time for industry to prepare for the new requirements and to assist in successful implementation of the Step Code, local governments are encouraged to notify the Energy Step Code Council at two key points in the implementation process. Initially, when the local government starts consultation with the construction industry on how the proposed approach, or on the proposed approach, and once again, when the local government has established a ratified bylaw or policy or program that references the Step Code. There are forms available through the Step Code Council and Building Standard, Standards Branch designed to simplify that process. And there's much more information available on the, on the energycode.ca website through the provincial government websites. Lots of good reading there about up-and-coming Step Codes. Implement implications. In order to implement step one on a voluntary basis, staff will take on a number of challenges as follows. Amend the Building Code to include the Step Codes, specifically step one, as a set of enforceable measures to promote the construction of energy-efficient buildings on an incremental basis. A policy or series of policies may be necessary to address the way the town will approach inspections of Step Code requirements. And number two, engage the construction industry with information sessions and encourage all stakeholders to take the appropriate training that will be required to achieve the goals of step one, and to notify the Step Code Council in writing during discussions with the construction industry, and again, when the bylaws and policies are in place, and to make plans for future enforcement of the next steps once the province decides they must be enforced. Information and direction requested. To date, nineteen B C municipalities have submitted notification forms, including Kelowna and Penticton. Actually, Penticton has, was ready to take theirs to council, and it didn't make it. So Kelowna has, but Penticton hasn't quite yet. Should council decide to direct staff to take the necessary steps to pursue voluntary enforcement of the Step Code, sufficient time must be allowed to, for the required bylaw and policy changes, the consultations with the construction industry, notification to the province, and education and training to take place. B C Building Standards Branch is recommending six months to a year for the implementation of any of the lower steps, and staff feel that a target date of January or February 2019 would be sufficient time. Direction on a launch date. Direction on a launch date will be requested if voluntary compliance is desired. Given that the implementation requires direction related to bylaw and policy changes, council will be asked in a future regular council meeting for its direction on this matter. And so, council may direct staff to begin the process of voluntarily enforcing the BC Step Code, or council may direct staff to wait until enforcement of the Step Code is mandatory under the BC Building Code in 2020. And under options, the information is presented as, this information is presented as an initial step in informing council of the need, needed changes, and providing basic information. At this point in time, the administration is asking council if any additional information is required prior to taking this item to a regular council meeting for decision.
Thank you very much. Counselor Rhodes, you had a...
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. You know, on the surface, this appears to be almost a no-brainer. I mean, the benefits to energy conservation are very obvious, if the statistics are accurate and that type of thing. I think I would be in favor of moving it forward as fast as we can, it would give, you know, our staff and yourself plenty of time to get up to speed. But I do have a question about the building construction industry in our province. Every time construction materials go up, you hear a lot of complaining and whining about, you know, 10,000 different things that are gonna happen if the price of a 2x4 goes up. Has there been pushback from the construction industry that you're aware of, or would that information be available to us at all?
There hasn't been an official pushback yet, because we haven't brought this out. This is the first step, is bringing it to council. We haven't really brought it out to our local construction industry yet. There's always gonna be pushback on anything that may cost a little bit more money. The statistics from the province say 1% to 3% in initial increased costs. I would say it'd be probably a little bit higher than that, but the long-term gain is, you know, much lower operating costs for single-family dwellings, so.
Good. Thank you. Counselor Hamburg.
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. Thank you, Director Paget, for this wonderful change.
Oh, yes, right. You're a building. We've all changed jobs today, sorry.
Anyways, three things. Do registered builders, will they have this information as quickly as you've got it? If you're a registered builder?
There's a big push on my association, the Building Officials of BC, to get building inspection staff to deliver this to their councils. The next step is to start to train the building industry. There are already some seminars out there on step one, what the basic breakdown of requirements are, and how to get the folks, the certified builders, trained in order to have that come into play as soon as possible.
So, from your point of view, how is this gonna affect the new construction that's underway now? When we're at a framing stage, for an example?
I think it will increase costs somewhat in the beginning, just because no one has done it before. There has been blower door testing as part of the process, that's a fairly new concept. It has been done sort of spotty all over the province by developers that are above the mainstream and trying to take new directions and interest their clients who have more money to take this type of approach to energy reduction. So, that will involve some training, and certified energy advisors that are now going to design these homes are going, are also gonna be in additional...
For home construction right now? Like, what will you do? What will you, as the building?
That's a good question.
Yeah.
We will have to decide, as a group, the administration, how we will inspect these and how we will create policies or not create policies to deal with how they'll be inspected onsite.
Yeah, just, we didn't want to see any slowdown in the continuing manufact, or building of these homes. And then, the, a current application process that's in place now would be adjusted to reflect these conditions?
Yep.
Would they? Okay.
That'll be one thing we'll have to look at, is changing, changes to our building application checklist and so forth, to make sure that all the information that's required prior to issuance of a building permit is there, ready to go.
And about renovations? You know, when you go to...
No, they're not looking at renovations now.
Are you going to reflect these?
No. No. First step is for new construction only. I'm sure that will come along eventually.
Okay, perfect.
Counselor King.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I presume before this, you meant for you have to amend one of our bylaws to even get this sort of first base?
We'll have to create room for the Step Codes in our bylaws.
Yeah, so that would have to come back before you do anything.
Yes, for sure.
So, you're just looking at whether we are in favor of you moving forward with this initiative, and it may take some time.
Because it is a voluntary initiative at the present time? That's what I'm asking, is coming for council for a direction on how to proceed.
Just a matter of process, he will be coming to council. This is just information, setting up the first step, and then, at a later council meeting, he'll be asking the question, you know, based on the two options that are in front of council now.
So, we don't have to make any decisions today?
You don't have to make a decision at this point in time.
Okay, so we'll think about it.
Where we choose?
I would suggest you don't.
Okay.
Because we, again, it's within the scope of, you know, you have to, you're providing direction to change a bylaw, so that should be done in a regular council meeting.
Okay.
There is much more of information available out there, and there are some pretty good dog and pony shows being put together at the present time. It's all fairly new, so when I do come back, we could talk about presenting, bringing somebody in to present a much more lavish PowerPoint presentation than I've created on here before.
Okay. Good idea. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. And our last item today is an update on the EOC, Emergency Preparedness, Flooding, et cetera. Ms. Van Veenen.
Thank you. So, this seems to be something that's on everybody's minds down in Oceas, so I'll just give you an update as to where we're at, where I'm at, and what we're looking at. First of all, of all, we don't control the water that's coming from Okanagan Lake, that's controlled by the Ministry of Forest Lands and Natural Resources. They've been monitoring it, they've been managing that, and we just wait and see what comes down from the Okanagan as to what we're gonna get here in Oceas. As for Zozol Dam, that's monitored by the International Joint Commission, for which the mayor is on that committee, and that, I understand, is wide open, and everything is flowing as it should. Where the concern is, is the snowpack levels, and nothing has really come down yet. And so, that is what we are watching. So, it's 152% of normal up in the Semilkamine. That is of great concern to us, because if the level of the Semilkamine rises above the height of Zozol Dam, it will back up into Oceas Lake. So, that is what we are watching, and that's why we watch the levels of Semilkamine River and the Okanagan Lake, and the Okanagan River, and so on and so forth. So, that's where we're at with that. We don't know how fast that'll come down. It's all dependent on the weather. Hopefully, if it remains cool enough and we have a slow warming trend, we should be okay. But if it gets warm, like in the next week or two, it's supposed to start warming up, and it happens to be really fast, we could be experiencing some flooding. Now, how much that could be, we don't know. I mean, right now, we're at 911.84 this morning at the lake, and the river is really low right now, so I'm not concerned about the river, so we're just watching that, and we've got a long ways to go before I'm even concerned about where the Semilkamine is at. So, what we're asking people to do is to be proactive. If they start seeing some flooding, to start taking action. We do have sandbags across from the Dairy Queen and sand, and people can start using that and enforcing some of their flood areas. Not everybody floods at the same level, so if they started flooding last year, or they were flooding last year, we reached 914.88 feet on the lake, we're at 911.88, so, you know, we've got about three feet to go, so they can, they'll have to monitor as to where they're gonna flood. I am in contact, or have weekly conference calls with various agencies, including the Rivers Forescast Center, Environment Canada, EMBC, those places. There is an emergency operations center opened up at the Regional District Office, for which we are operating under their task number at the moment, as we don't have any localized flooding. Other than that, you know, I'm just asking everybody to just be really aware of where their floodplains level, if they do live along the lake. A couple of suggestions were made, and Mr. Stuckey made a suggestion last week, as to volunteers and getting a work party together for sandbags. I am considering that, but not at this time until we actually see some flooding, because if we're not going to see the flooding that, you know, we may get, there's no point in getting a bunch of sandbags ready. So, probably in the next two weeks is where we're gonna be watching for how much is coming down from the Semilkamine, how much is coming down from the Okanagan, really dependent on the weather, the rain.
Snow.
The snow. All of that. But if there are people that want to help out their neighbors, I have had some calls of some people that are concerned about getting sandbags. They're elderly, they can't get the sandbags out to their locations. If people can help out their neighbors that way, if we do start experiencing flooding, and other than that, we have 7,000 sandbags here in Oceas. I can get more on a day's notice, but we're hoping it's just gonna come down really slow, and we won't have any flooding.
Absolutely. Can, if somebody requires some assistance and they don't have neighbors, can they phone Town Hall and be on a list, or how does that work? Or is there somebody looking, other than you, looking after?
Well, right now, we haven't formalized anything, because we're not experiencing flooding, and...
Sure.
I'm gonna keep my fingers crossed that we won't.
Okay. Okay. But we will look at it again if we need to.
But in the next week or two, and, you know, it is quite a high probability that we will need some volunteers, and yes, if they want to call here, we'll keep a list. And, you know, if we do do a work party to get some sandbags out, then we can, we know who to call.
Okay.
Yeah. And we will keep updates on our website. So, we do have a flood page on our website, and we'll keep that updated for people.
Thank you. Counselor Rhodes.
Thank you. Just a question of clarity, the 914.88, was that at this time of the year, or was that our peak last year?
That was the peak in June of last year. Yeah, and then it started receding after that, so that's the highest we got last year.
Okay.
But just to remember, people were flooding before that repeat there, so they should really know what their flood levels are.
Okay. Thank you very much for that update, and we certainly appreciate having that as often as necessary, updates. I think that's all that we have for our meeting today, and so, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you very much, Counselor King, Counselor Campbell, all in favor. Thank you. And I think we have five minutes.